Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council, April 12th, 2023. It is six o'clock, a little bit after. I apologize for being late. We do have one public hearing this evening, and it has to do with a rezoning request. Roll call vote, please. I mean, roll call. Roll call order, I'm sorry.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
Mohler.
Present.
We have the quorum.
You first off, I'm offering a prayer. Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able. Almighty God, guide us as we make decisions this evening. Protect those in Hamilton, in our country, and in the world. We have chosen careers protecting others as well as protecting our freedoms. If you would, please say a special prayer for Louisville Metro Police Officer Nicholas Wilt. As you know, he injured severely in the Louisville situation. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Special presentations, Mr. City Clerk. We have a Streets Park mural.
That's right, sir. That's right, sir. So we will have Jen Ake Smith of Streets Park to present this item.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jen Ake Smith, and I'm the Program Manager for the Streets Park Public Art Program. And I'm excited to present to you our chosen designs that we're going to be creating for summer 2023. And so far, we, in Hamilton, we have created 17 murals and 14 utility boxes. So we're creating quite a sort of collection of works. It's exciting to see more and more go into the neighborhoods and such. So I just wanted to revisit our goals for the program. We wish to showcase the creativity and vision of artists through high-quality mural designs, to present a diversity of artistic styles and perspectives throughout Hamilton, to increase the visibility of the arts in Hamilton, to give jobs to local working artists, to attract more residents, visitors, and businesses to the Hamilton area. So what we do is we have the artists submit designs to the program, and then we have a selection committee that looks at those and scores them, and ultimately helps to choose these designs. And they looked at a few different things. They looked at the artist's experience. They looked at their past artwork. They looked at the designs, are they excellent in terms of artistic skill? Do they present a creative and original design concept? And are they responsive to the site location, the neighborhood where they're being placed? So they look at all these things to make those decisions. And our first site that we were looking at for a mural was the Hamilton Lane Library. And this is located in German Village. It's home to Hamilton's First Quartz School newspaper and businesses, and it showcases a variety of 19th-century architectural styles. The Hamilton Library, the original one, opened in 1866, and you can kind of see a little bit of it on the right side of the photo. This mural is going to be placed on the newer addition to the building, and this is facing the parking lot where everybody is pulling in. We will have four artists that will be painting this mural, and it will take them about three weeks. And this is our chosen design for this location. The title is "Stream of Consciousness," and it's by artist Anisa Poshin. And the artist says, "This design shows the Great Miami River as a young girl with flowing water as hair, with a large book open in her hands. Her shirt is embroidered with German folk art, floral folk art motifs to celebrate the region's German history. Emanating out of the book are cloud-like vignettes that show various STEM concepts and careers, like circuitry, entomology, botany, math, astronauts — Ohio has produced so many — and engineering. Fun details: The circuitry in the upper-right corner of the design is the interior of a Yamaha synthesizer, and the butterfly shown towards the bottom-left is the eastern black swallowtail, one of Ohio's most common butterflies. Science and arts are so connected, so I wanted to nod to that with this design. Drawing from the warm tones of the architecture, the color palette is soothing and nature-inspired. A striking central focal point immediately draws people in, and they can find new details to enjoy each time they visit the library. I hope the river and her book inspire viewers to dive into the wonders of learning." And our second site that the committee looked at was Bartel's Heating and Cooling. This is located at 929 Main Street. It's in the Armendale neighborhood, and it's right in sort of the entrance to the West Side Business District. It's close to Highland Elementary, Milliken Woods Park, and the post office. And Bartel's is also going to be celebrating their 50th anniversary, so it's a great time to add a little pizzazz to their wool. We're going to have two artists on this mural, and this will take about one to two weeks. And this is the design that was selected for this location. This one's called Bartel's Butterflies, and it's by artist Madeline Tipton. She says, "This metamorphosis mural honors the past and looks forward to the future. As migrating creatures, monarch butterflies are a symbol of hope and transformation. There will be some reflecting of the past in the next year as Bartel celebrates their 50th anniversary. The reds and blues in my color palette are a nod to Bartel's Heating and Cooling. The gears celebrate the rich industrial past of the area. The Hamilton community will also be looking towards the future as the city is growing and transforming through art, as represented by the hands creating paper airplanes together and welcoming new members migrating to be part of it." And then we move on. We have those two mural sites, and then we are going to be painting three utility boxes. And the nice thing about this year is they're really spread out throughout a lot of the neighborhoods. It's really going to get a lot of distance, I think, in different places. So this one is called Colors of the River. It's, this utility box location is at the corner of Ray and B Street. So it's located in the Prospect Hill neighborhood, close to Spooky Noook Sports, Combs Park, and the Great Miami River. And this one was created by Sarah Hinfield, and she's actually graduating this year from the Miami University-Hamilton Community Arts Program. And she says, "This utility box is a love letter to color and the joy it can inspire. Due to its proximity to the Great Miami River, I placed a river as the anchor for the viewer's eye, sweeping across the piece and giving a sense of continuity. I also included a person on the boat to show the size of the space, making it feel more expansive. The dripping sheets of color above could be paint rushing down or swooping droplets of water. I really enjoyed creating this piece and hope that it might brighten the day of folks passing by." And this is our second utility box. This one is located at the corner of MLK and Hanover in the Riverview neighborhood. It's a mixed-use residential and commercial area along MLK. It's home to such icons as the BTW Community Center, Bailey Square, Foundation Field, and Sims Park. This piece was created by Kiara Fisher. She's actually a resident of this neighborhood, and she is a Hamilton High School senior. She's going to be working with a team of several high school students to complete this design. She says, "This mural design is inspired by the train that runs right by this mural. As adults, we are annoyed by trains. They stop us, they make us late, but as kids, we stare at them and wonder when they fly by. I wanted to bring back that sense of childhood wonder through this design using fun, bright colors. I chose this location because three out of the four members of this group have grown up in this exact neighborhood. My community is filled with so much diversity, so I wanted to highlight this through her race. My neighborhood is filled primarily with Black and Hispanic people, and they deserve representation." And then finally, our last utility box. This is located at the corner of Pleasant and Hooven Avenue. So it's in the Lindenwald neighborhood, and it's close to St. Anne's Church. It's a mixed-use residential and commercial area along Pleasant Avenue. And it was created by Michelle Fur, and she's going to be working with her family to create this box. So her husband and her two grown children, they're all artists and creators, and they're going to be collaborating to make this. She says, "We have created a design that consists of four unique stained glass patterns that reflect Craftsman, Mission, Prairie, and Art Deco design elements. The designs are unified with their common color palette. These designs pay tribute to the architecture of many of the homes in the neighborhood and Ohio's long history with stained glass manufacturing and window production." I don't know if I'm doing something to this microphone to make it do this. I hear that. So that's all we have for you today, and I hope you will enjoy these works of public art. They're going to be created this summer. Probably, I believe the first one is starting by the end of May and going throughout probably July. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, and your committee, so much for brightening up through these murals and all, educating our city, because they all have a statement. They all say something, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That's it for special presentations, correct?
That's correct, sir.
For the audience and citizens, individuals who wish to make comments, may speak during this part of the agenda or wait until the items are voted on the council floor. Everybody who's speaking has to sign this public speaking book. These speakers are allowed up to five minutes. Jim Laumann, first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I was going toward Ralph Ford from the river, you know? And I stopped every single light on High Street, every single light. Pretty bad, isn't it?
Let me let you finish your comments first, Jim.
Why is that, you know?
That's your comment right now, correct?
Basically, yeah.
Okay. Basically, you have informed our city engineer that you loved it.
I told him earlier, he said, "I haven't heard anyone talk there again." It was so kind of, it was real kind, you couldn't get a car, three or four cars through the night.
Jim, I kind of had the same situation a couple days ago when I was going down High Street. And it's all timing, timing that you get through the street. It's timing on the lights. There's a lot of time factors there, a lot of moving parts. So if we keep hearing that complaint, as well as adding it to yours, we'll look at it. But sometimes we do, we'll get caught, station to station.
That's what I'm saying, because I don't know. Matter of fact, I haven't seen it that bad since the 80s on High Street. I mean, it's been better on High Street for me, not that bad, you know?
Well, we constantly look at ways to improve our traffic flow.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah?
Jim, as I talked to you before, you know, this new lighting system, center system that we have here, unfortunately, it's not going to happen overnight. You know, the traffic patterns are going to change a lot, so they have to... I probably should call Rich every day and yell "Not eating avenues" sometimes, but I know it's going to change, you know? I know it's going to change. We have to be patient, and unfortunately, I think Rich will validate that. It's just not going to happen overnight, and it probably won't happen in a year because it's all, with all this new traffic we got, it's going to have to take a lot to figure it out. So it's be patient, you know? I think it's, I think everybody has to be patient, and I think it's going to come out and work out very well, so...
Well, if I had patience, I'd be a doctor.
Well, huh. Dad joke. Go ahead. You can sit now, Jim.
And that was in our faces, Jim. That was in our faces. Okay. Thanks, Jim. Mark? I know, I'm looking at you right now.
Kaylor.
Kaylor. All right. It's good reach. Second word here. Come on up, Mark. Give us your name and your address, if you would, please.
Mark Kaylor, 2247 Mossy Grove, Hamilton. Thank you for allowing me some time to speak. I've got some questions. I've asked a few of these questions for quite a while. What is going on with the old Beckett Paper Company?
Just make a list of all your questions, and we're going to try and get answers then.
Okay.
Number one is Beckett Paper. What else do we have?
Okay, number two is what's going on with Cohen's? With the recycling center?
Okay.
And from what I read, the Washington Boulevard area between Eaton Road and Cleveland is due to be repaved this year. Anybody know when it's going to happen?
I'm writing all these down.
I know. Okay.
Different people give answers.
Absolutely. Okay. And are you going to change that road into four lanes? Okay, it was originally designed to be four lanes. If you'll drive down it, you'll notice there's a large distance between the sidewalk and the curb, and that was for the road to be made extra wide. But it was always in the plans for the city of Hamilton to have a bridge in that area, exactly what we're trying to do now. I just don't want to see this pavement go to a lot of trouble, and then somebody say, "Yep, we need four lanes. Let's dig up our new work and start all over again."
That's three or four things, right?
Yes.
Okay. Man, Joe was commenting on Beckett. Say anything about Beckett at this point in time, sir? Okay?
I'll let Mr. Eng take the last two of the questions. With respect to the Beckett Paper and the Cohen Recycling, the city does control the Beckett Paper site?
The city does control the Beckett Paper site, and we have been in active negotiations with a development team from Northern Ohio on that project. I know it does not look good, but as you can imagine, it's a very complicated project to undertake, no different than the Champion Paper Mill was, and that took many, many years to get that project up and running. However, I think that by May or June, at a council meeting, we should have a much more specific update as we work through some of the details of what a final agreement will look like. And I was actually in Columbus, Ohio, last week, working on that very project. But I think people will be pleased with what it will become, and even though it will not be close to being done this fall, there's been a commitment for them to come in and do their best to clean and secure the site as they start the construction project, process, I should say. With respect to the Cohen recycling facility, the Cohen family owns that property still. However, we have been working with someone on that, on that property, making an assumption that they gain control of the property, which has not happened yet. I truly believe that there will be a public update slash announcement at either the last meeting in May or maybe the first meeting of June of this year. So I think by June, there should be a lot more clarity around those two projects. Unfortunately, neither one of them are at a point where you can say with metaphysical certitude that they're going to be happening tomorrow. But I truly believe that as long as nothing crazy happens, that we'll have some good updates on those no later than June. I'll let our Director of Engineering, Rich Engel, speak to your last two questions.
Have we picked a location that we're actually going to quote-unquote "trade properties" with them?
So we have already traded properties with Cohen Recycling. So they owned the recycling facility just south of East High Street. So we have, that transaction has already taken place, and we have provided them a location as you head north out of 127 on the east side. So if you're familiar where the, our infrastructure department had their pole yard, very close to where the transfer station is for Rumkey.
Okay.
So there is a location in that immediate area that we've already traded them for.
Okay, I wasn't sure if some of this North Hamilton crossing, where you're going to put the bridge, what you're going to do, was holding up the Cohen project.
I don't think it is. Obviously, all of it, I mean, it's a big, complex formula with many variables, but with one end result, and we're trying to get, the end result for us is making sure that we maximize and do the best we can with the land in that immediate area. So yes, I mean, all of it is playing a role in this. But yeah, I think by June of this year, at the latest, we should have updates, much more detailed updates on both of those projects.
Okay. I know the last time I was here and I spoke about the mess that was over at Beckett's. Within a week, there was a major cleanup, and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for bringing, I mean, first of all, shame on, shame on me for letting it get to that state. And we did send some city crews over to clean that up. It is my hope that by summer, we'll have a formal agreement in place, and then we'll have this development group out of Northern Ohio taking care of the maintenance on a go-forward basis.
Okay.
Joshua, if I might. Importantly, the property that Joshua mentioned, just south of Route 4 at the corner of Maple, has been mediated already. If you've noticed, the fencing is down. The property has been fairly much cleaned up between Route 4 and East Avenue. So again, when the city took possession of their property, the team went in and cleaned that property, and we hope that we'd be able to do the same thing on some of the comments that you've made tonight.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Regarding Northwest Washington paving, it is scheduled to be bid after July 1st this year. We are receiving a $1.1 million Ohio Public Works Commission grant for that. Their fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th, so we cannot do any project until after July 1st. I'm not sure it's going to get paved this year. We don't even have a bid yet. We don't have a contractor, so I don't know what that schedule looks like. And at this point, there's no plan to widen the street to four lanes. We are going to try and widen it at the intersections so we can at least get turn lanes at each of the intersections between Cleveland and Eaton.
Okay. You know, like I said, it's always been designed that way for the last 70, 80 years, if that was what your plans were. Because it seems to me to be a little silly if we're going to do this bridge and traffic going across from the east side to the west side. Unfortunately, I live right off of Washington Boulevard. It's a wonderful neighborhood, but it may become a very heavily trafficked road. But to take from four lanes, then run it down about four blocks to two lanes, and then open it back up to four lanes once we cross Eaton Road, doesn't seem very efficient. Seems like we're bottlenecking all the traffic and going to back it up all the way down Washington Boulevard. I just wondered if that's, anybody had really thought about it?
Well, there's always budget considerations when we have those kind of projects, and that's where we don't have the budget at the moment. We could probably and most likely submit for grant funding to help with that widening, but at this point, there's no plan to do so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mark, for raising those issues, getting the discussion out there, explanation out there. Thank you, City Manager, and Mr. Rangle for noting some things about...
Yep, thank you.
We're all getting educated now.
Okay, we all need to be, and we all want this to be the best for the city.
Yes, we do, and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bradley Beckham? Give us your name and your address, please.
Hi, Bradley Beckham, 457 Fairview Avenue. I have a few concerns about traffic court. So I contacted a few members of the bar association to see how that would go. And they said that the tickets never issued, but they would not go in that courtroom. They said the prosecutor never negotiates on these issues. Then I called the clerk, and the clerk said almost never. So it seems as a waste of time. Are we abridging due process for sovereign immunity? Or is there like remedy for people to argue their case?
Well, as far as being in the right location to discuss something like that, you said you already talked to a lawyer, is that correct, or a couple lawyers?
Multiple lawyers, yes.
I think your issue might be a little premature. I haven't talked to whoever you want to talk to, and if something has to be amended, it might have to be amended not here, but some other place. But bringing up an issue that we have not really talked about, as far as, you said this is a municipal court traffic situation, correct? I want to take it up with the individuals you have talked with and possibly the court system, and go from there.
Okay, and they wouldn't take gold or silver as legal tender to settle the debt? I try to be at the window.
Tell you what, I had a moderator. Are we in the right place even to be discussing this at this point in time?
No, Mr. Mayor. Our council rules prohibit us to talk about pending court cases, and it appears the city has a pending court case, and that should be taken up with the court system, or as you indicated, with his attorney.
That's all we can do right now, Mr. Beckham. It's just not the right place at the right time, and it's a court system type of situation, sir.
All righty, could you get with me on what, the time and venue to discuss this?
I, definitely not this time. If you've got a pending case and some other things going on, I mean, this is not, definitely not the right time. Seek your legal counsel. Seek your legal counsel.
Okay.
Beckham? Thank you, sir. With the care of the audience and citizens, we now go to the consent agenda. That includes all staff reports and caucus reports. And we will go in the committee of the whole for, I believe, one caucus agenda item. So I accept the motion to the regular meeting be recessed. The committee of the whole take place.
So moved.
Second, motion to the council member Nab. Second to my vice mayor Ryan. Fall on fear, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Time is 6:28. Please lead us into the one item caucus agenda, please.
Absolutely. The one item on our caucus agenda will be presented by our Executive Director of External Services, Mr. Tom Vanderhorst.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Tom Vanderhorst, the Executive Director of External Services this evening. I'm here to present to you the agenda item, or the caucus item, rather, regarding a revolving loan fund application received by Sotary Group, doing business as Pawnee Water. They're over in the IRG Building at 315 Dayton Avenue. That's a, or Dayton Street, rather. There's an aerial of the place. This venture began in 2021. They're currently selling their product in 140 stores. You can go to their website and sort of see actively where they're selling from and what they're asking for. They're asking for, they actually put in an application for $39,500, and then the, what we're asking is for approval of $30,000. So they would have about $10,000 in this labeling machine that you see pictured here. Currently, the company is buying their bottles that you see at the bottom, pre-labeled. This machine would allow them to do this onsite. And what they're telling us is they're bottling our water by doing this. It would allow them to create 10 full-time jobs and 10 part-time jobs. And if you get a chance, go out to their website, because there's a nice, a couple of nice videos out there showing them bottling this water. And so the benefits of approval, like I said, the job creation, support local business, building activation. I mean, as we know, the former Ohio casualty building was inactive for quite a while. And most importantly, and I think this is why you should go out to the website, marking of our great asset, you can see that's the landing page when you go out to their website, and they prominently display "Our world's best tasting drinking water" as one of their slogans, monikers, or whatever you want to call it. Any questions on this?
Any questions or comments? Thank you.
That is the summation of our reports, Mayor.
I accept the motion, and the committee of the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second, we're going to the council member Fear, second to my council member Pullman. Fall on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Time is 6:31. I accept the motion, and the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
My vice mayor Ryan, second to my council member Fear. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
The motion regarding... Mr. Mayor? Sorry. Councilmember Pullman?
Okay, I'll make a motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council received the reports of the consent agenda, accorred with the recommendations.
Second.
The council member Pullman? The council member Pullman. Second by Vice Mayor, second by that. The member Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye. Is there a lot of water here? Were you doing this right?
We just reconvened the meeting, and we now are, we just reconvened the regular meetings. We're going to concur the recommendations of staff.
Okay.
Then after this, we're going to move on to the public hearing, sir.
All right. So we've got a motion that with the exception of any noted items, the council received the reports of the consent agenda and concur on the recommendation. I think councilman Pullman, did you vote on that?
Yes.
I think councilmember Vaughn, you said it, so I paused as I jumped up. All in favor, please say aye. Let's repeat it again.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Now go to the public hearing section of the agenda. Let's accept the motion. The regular meeting be recessed, and the public hearing take place.
So moved. Second.
Motion by councilmember Nabb. Second by councilmember Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Regular meeting is recessed, and it's 6:33. We now go into the one and only public hearing, please.
A public hearing regarding a request to rezone 1796 South Erie Boulevard from BPD Business Plan Development to B2 Community Business Zoning District, and a request to establish zoning on the vacated portion of Emlay Avenue to B2 Community Business Zoning District.
Does anybody on the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving this request to rezone this address, 1796 South Erie Boulevard? Anyone on the audience wishes to be heard at this public hearing about that issue mentioned, stated by the city clerk? Hearing none? Anyone on council wish to make a comment or be heard, or to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Ryan?
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Vice Mayor Ryan. Second by councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. It is 6:34. Let's accept the motion. The regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Fear. Second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion to reconvene the regular meeting.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nabb?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
The regular meeting reconvened at 6:34. Now go to council actions. Pertain to legislative items. And I'll set the motion on that, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council has furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Vaughn. Second by councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Time is now 6:35. Now go to actions pertaining to legislative items. And our pending legislation starts off with number three, I believe?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Before I continue with pending legislation, Mayor, I was notified by our Assistant Engineering, our Assistant Director of Engineering, Alan Messer, that Agenda Item Number 13, which is a resolution pertaining to appropriating property in North B Street, is no longer needs to be on the agenda. Therefore, I am recommending that a motion be made to amend the agenda to pull Agenda Item Number 13, please.
Yeah, I set the motion to amend the agenda by pulling Agenda Item Number 13.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ryan. Second by councilmembers Fear. Do you want a roll call vote on that?
Voice vote is fine, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. So Agenda Item Number 13 is pulled. We go back to number three, which is a second reading of an ordinance involving our CDBG and home funds.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton's annual action plan update for fiscal year 2023 through 2024, delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant, CDBG, and home investment partnership program funds, and authorizing the submission of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mayor? Councilmember Nabb? I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Nabb. Second by councilmember Pullman. Any discussion on this? Just kind of repeat again, CDBG funds this year are like 1.35 million. Home funds are 399,000, approximately 500. So if there's no discussion, we'll do a roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nabb?
Yes.
Orders adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number Four, which is a second reading of an ordinance involving the Vinyl Max expansion.
An ordinance approving a major planned development departure amendment for Vinyl Max 2921 McBride Court pertaining to a proposed 150,000 square foot building addition as the Vinyl Max expansion and two variance requests to the Hamilton zoning ordinance. RVP engineering applicant, TLP 2921 McBride LLC owner, the second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn. Second by councilmember Pullman. Any discussion on this one? And this is a large expansion, 150,000 square feet. I think we get the people here from Vinyl Max, is that correct? Okay, second reading, ready to vote. Roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nabb?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Orders adopted, 7-0.
Thank you for your expansion. Agenda Item Number Five, second reading of an ordinance involving the job of payroll administrator.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2022-12-126, adopted December 14th, 2022, by adding the new classification of payroll administrator, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn. Second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion or questions on this one? Okay, roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nabb?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Orders adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number Six, second reading of an emergency ordinance involving a permanent utility easement, 3190 Tyler'sville Road.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of a permanent utility easement located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, 3190 Tyler'sville Road. Tanya L. Mall, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, second reading.
Mayor?
Councilmember Nabb? I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nabb. Second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Discussion, questions on this one? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nabb?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Orders adopted, 7-0.
Go to second reading of emergency ordinance, temporary easement involving 2981 Tyler'sville Road.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of a temporary easement located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, 2981 Tyler'sville Road. Jacob and Brooke M. Masters, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted, second.
Motion by councilmember Pullman. Second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Comments, questions on this one? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nabb?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Orders adopted, 7-0.
Go to new legislation, Agenda Item Number Nine, two readings of an emergency ordinance involving a classification residential service seasonal worker.
An emergency ordinance amending Schedule D2 of the city's compensation and classification plan of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, as set forth in ordinance number OR 2023-3-33, adopted March 8th, 2023, as amended from time to time by adding the classification of resident service seasonal worker and repealing the existing Schedule D2 as set forth in said ordinance, first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and the said ordinance be read a second time by its title?
Second.
Motion by councilmember Pullman. Second by councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nabb?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Okay, second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance amending Schedule D2 of the city's compensation and classification plan of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, as set forth in ordinance number OR 2023-3-33, adopted March 8th, 2023, as amended from time to time by adding the classification of resident service seasonal worker and repealing the existing Schedule D2 as set forth in said ordinance, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Pullman. Second by councilmember Vaughn. Discussion on this one? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nabb?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number Ten, first reading of emergency ordinance involving permanent utility easement, 1593 Eden Park Drive.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of a permanent utility easement located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, 1593 Eden Park Drive. Eden Core Condominium Owners Association, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you. I want to say on the record that during the public hearing, there was a public speaking book, which no one signed the book for public speaking in that public... So, leave on number 11, is that correct, Mr. City Clerk?
That's correct, sir.
Number 11 is first reading of emergency ordinance involving permanent utility easements, temporary easements, 2921 Tyler'sville Road.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of two permanent utility easements and three temporary easements located at 2921 Tyler'sville Road. Joe N. M. and Daniel L. Schellenbach, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you. We go to Agenda Item Number Twelve, first reading of an ordinance involving a change of zoning, 1796 South Erie Boulevard.
An emergency ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning of 1796 South Erie Boulevard from BPD Business Plan Development to B2 Community Business Zoning District, and establish B2 zoning on a vacated portion of Emlay Avenue, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
We pulled number 13, so we're directly to number 14.
That's correct.
Number 14, resolution involving our side lot program.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, 1593 Eden Park Drive. Eden Core Condominium Owners Association, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you. I want to say on the record that during the public hearing, there was a public speaking book, which no one signed the book for public speaking in that public... So, leave on number 11, is that correct, Mr. City Clerk?
That's correct, sir.
Number 11 is first reading of emergency ordinance involving permanent utility easements, temporary easements, 2921 Tyler'sville Road.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of two permanent utility easements and three temporary easements located at 2921 Tyler'sville Road. Joe N. M. and Daniel L. Schellenbach, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you. We go to Agenda Item Number Twelve, first reading of an ordinance involving a change of zoning, 1796 South Erie Boulevard.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, 1593 Eden Park Drive. Eden Core Condominium Owners Association, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you. I want to say on the record that during the public hearing, there was a public speaking book, which no one signed the book for public speaking in that public... So, leave on number 11, is that correct, Mr. City Clerk?
That's correct, sir.
Number 11 is first reading of emergency ordinance involving permanent utility easements, temporary easements, 2921 Tyler'sville Road.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of two permanent utility easements and three temporary easements located at 2921 Tyler'sville Road. Joe N. M. and Daniel L. Schellenbach, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you. We go to Agenda Item Number Twelve, first reading of an ordinance involving a change of zoning, 1796 South Erie Boulevard.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning of 1796 South Erie Boulevard from BPD Business Plan Development to B2 Community Business Zoning District, and establish B2 zoning on a vacated portion of Emlay Avenue, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
We pulled number 13, so we're directly to number 14.
That's correct.
Number 14, resolution involving our side lot program.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to an adjoining property owner as a land contract, see, with a land contract as a side lot, 922 and 926 South 12th Street.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.[1308.91]
and three temporary easements located at 2921 Tyersville Road. Joe N. M. and Daniel L. Schellenbach, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you, we go to Agenda Item Number Twelve, first reading of an ordinance involving a change of zoning, 1796 South Erie Boulevard.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance, number 7503, by changing the zoning of 1796 South Erie Boulevard from BPD, Business Plan Development, to B Two, Community Business, Zoning District, and establish B Two zoning on a vacated portion of MLI Avenue, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
We hold number thirteen, so it would rather than number fourteen.
That's correct.
Number fourteen, resolution involving a side lot program.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to an adjoining property owner as a s- as a land contract, see, with a land contract as a side lot, 922 and 926 South 12th Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan, any discussion on this? Uh, at some point in time, we, Mr. City Manager, get a report on how many side lots we've had over the years, because I bet you it's going to be an astounding and very positive figure. If you could give us a figure sometime, that would be great. Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, roll call vote, please, on number fourteen.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to Agenda Item Number Fifteen, which is a resolution also involving a side lot, and this is 1147 Elm Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 1147 Elm Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, Senate Councilmember Nab, discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to Agenda Item Number Sixteen, another resolution involving, uh, our side lot program, 408 Bell Avenue.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 408 Bell Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Ryan, move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Ryan, second by Councilmember Pullman, discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to Agenda Item Number Seventeen, resolution involving, um, settlement terms.
A resolution accepting the material terms of the settlement with Allergan, CVS, Teva, Walmart, and Walgreens, and authorizing the city manager to execute and the law director to approve participation agreements and declaring an emergency.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Fear, question, questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Number eighteen, resolution declaring an emergency involving us urging legislation to protect our citizens due to the dangers of, uh, train derailments.
A resolution urging the legislative branches of the federal government and the state of Ohio to enact legislation to further protect the citizens of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, from the inherent dangers of train derailment on the tracks located at or near our city and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Pullman, first by Pullman, sorry, second by Councilmember Fear. Uh, roll call vote on that before, I mean, discussion before we do a roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Counsel, I want to thank all of you for considering this legislation, I really appreciate that. Uh, this, this is very important, our community deserves to be protected from railroads, and I'm really happy that, um, the federal government and the state are really, um, trying to do everything they can to, to keep us protected. Uh, and Mayor, you mentioned this at the last meeting, there's numerous items in here that we have been working on, uh, long before, uh, this resolution hit, hit our desk, you know, there's, um, additional laws in here about block crossings and, um, you know, the call to action for, for an increase in, in more programs for, um, at grade separations, and that's something, you know, we've been working on for a long time, so, um, thank you again for considering this. Um, you know, safety is our top priority, the city council members are, are here to protect our residents and our businesses, so, um, anything that we can do to continue to push legislation like this, I think our residents would appreciate, so, thank you again.
No, but you are correct, we've been addressing some of these issues locally. I think this has to be a national issue as well, and I'm glad that they're stepping up, talking about the things, like you said, we've been talking about for a while. Right now, Richmond and Indiana, I mean, there's a toxic burn going on right now, and, um, I don't think it was related to railroad, but there's, that's how these things happen. They evacuated people there because of the toxic burn, and Richmond's not that far away from us, uh, so that could happen back in Ohio again, that's burning right now. Any other comments or discussion amongst council before we, uh, before we vote? Okay, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Audience of the city manager.
Mayor, um, just wanted to, um, talk again briefly about the Criminal Justice Center that we had the groundbreaking at it, at four PM, uh, this afternoon. Uh, I know some of this was already said, um, on site during the groundbreaking, but first and foremost, thank you to the mayor and council for making it such a priority. I mean, I remember early on when the ARPA funding became available, that council was insistent that, um, a large part of that money be directed to the Criminal Justice Center, and without that type of support, that project would not have happened. Uh, second, um, with Director Skirmezi, rarely has a project happened in thirteen years in Hamilton where I've spent zero percent of my time thinking about it or working on it. Uh, the level of detail that he had to go through on a project of this size and scope, um, has been working, I mean, it's just been nothing short of incredible. Obviously, a lot of city departments were liaison with him from zoning and, uh, with Liz Hayden's department, uh, planning, I should say, but the more of the zoning and planning aspects of that, uh, infrastructure with, uh, Rich Engel behind me on the engineering side. Obviously, a lot of people worked on that, but it is a very large project to put together, um, and he truly deserves a lot of accolades for all the effort to get it to the point where it's at today. But, uh, that's it, thank you.
Well, you delegated it to the right person, you got a lot of great team members that you have put together. Went to the right person and we're going to get to the finish line, we have that facility out. Any other comments, I mean, we were all there for that, and it was really a great day for our citizens, our police department, our Hamilton Municipal Court. Comments? Audience of city council, how we can make comments? Any comments from council at this point in time?
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I'd like us to revisit or look more at how we address audience of city council. I, without going through, um, specific examples, I know we've gone through a spell where something shows up on the agenda and no one on council really knows about it till we see it on the agenda. I know that Eric Hadson might contact him about raising chickens, and I just think that audience of city council can be more than just celebratory of this is what I did this weekend, this is what I saw. I don't know if we can create an agenda for this, but I, I think that that is an opportunity that we're missing to be able to discuss things between the seven of us, to hear what's going on. Um, for citizens to hear what we're discussing and not, because we can't do emails, correct? This isn't something we can send out an email on and.
Right, we can't deliberate, uh, pub- public business via emails, that's correct.
I think we're missing an opportunity with audience of council to bring things up and discuss things with the seven of us here together. So I'm not saying I know how to do it, I just think that it is something that we should be doing.
During, during this portion of our meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, that is an open discussion anyway to the public, right? So that's, I mean, we could talk about that, like.
Right.
The chicken, I don't mean laugh about that.
I know. I hesitated saying it, but.
I had four comments on that, I just couldn't believe it, I don't know, maybe the price of eggs or something, but that, that and bees, but, and I, I guess if we're going to discuss that on there, um, you know, do we all know the ordinance on that right now? I mean, maybe we should, I think that ordinance was sent out to me, I asked for it. Um, uh, Daniel worked really hard on that and got it for me, but, um, some things I learned about raising chickens in Hamilton, so, but it's, uh, can't do it, so, but it is a good discussion.
You know, like I said, I think that we're missing an opportunity to be talking to each other and have everybody else here, what kind of things are coming up within the city.
I'm going to say that I think it's a good idea, we get to figure out which ones we're going to be discussing up here, which ones will be going to ordinance review, which is something where we do put various, um, I'm not going to say controversial, but ones where we need public input as well as the input from the city, uh, panel members on ordinance review. So, I mean, it might be a way to, to discuss a possible issue and say, let's have ordinance review take a look again at, uh, for example, uh, raising chickens, which I've, like I mentioned to you, I've also gotten a few people mention that to me, but maybe if you raise the issue here, uh, discuss it a little bit here, but then say, maybe that should be visited by the ordinance review commission. Or.
I agree.
Or, uh, it's a main questions answered, why we have all of our city team, our good part of our city team here during the council meeting, I, I think we can definitely improve audience citizens by, by doing just that. Uh, comments or concurrence that that's something that we need to, we take a look at and bring up more ideas during the audience of, uh, council.
Well, we had once, last year, I think we talked about, and I know Tim is really good at telling what's going on with land bank now that you're there, I mean, that could be, this should be a time that we should be talking about the committees that we serve on. Like I could say what's going on in Parks Conservancy, not just to be talking, but if there really is something noteworthy, this just can be more than just, this is what I did this weekend with social.
I know Fairfield does something similar to that, I'm not sure if it's every meeting, every, for example, if you're on the Hamilton Parks Conservancy, uh, or you're a 17 strong liaison, maybe that 17 strong probably in every meeting, but you have to be kind of careful because we all sit on a lot of boards and a lot of commissions, we have to kind of pick out maybe which ones might be more frequently reported on than others.
Or just if there's something noteworthy, we don't have to talk all the time just to be talking, but again, I just think we're missing an opportunity, we all say how the seven of us would like to talk more to each other with things, and I think this is the perfect way to do it, that's all.
What if we go ahead at our next meeting on April twenty-sixth? Got something on your mind, bring it up, and then we'll see if it goes to ordinance review commission, uh, goes for a report from, uh, city manager, we can, we can try it that way for a while. So, bring your ideas, bring, bring the ideas that people contact you about that you talked to during your, during your, uh, weeks, weekends, and the like, you know, so, do something like that for a while.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Sort of along those lines, um, one of the things that I've been contacted about pretty regularly is the distribution of flyers that are being, it might be ads, coupons that are being thrown, uh, lawn care, painting of sidewalks. I know just this week, again, I had, um, actually a bag of rocks with a little business card in it thrown on my driveway, and it lined the street, everyone, some missed somewhere in the street, but we do have an ordinance, Madam Law Director, that you and I have talked about, and I just think it's important to remind everyone that there are regulations about things like that. We certainly wouldn't, um, find it acceptable if we just drove down the street and started throwing empty McDonald's cups in everybody's driveway. So, some may enjoy getting the coupons, but there are some red regulations, legislation that's been passed. And I would just say that in my conversations with Letitia, that I have decided I'm just going to remind everyone that we do have regulations like that, and if you're unsure, ask before you do that, because it does cause a nuisance, these can go down into the sewers, they blow around the yards, and they can certainly be considered litter, so, just a reminder.
Yes, and when, um, Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, we do have, uh, we do receive 311 requests on this issue sometimes, and when we receive those requests, we have an automated response that lets people know how they can opt out of those programs, it also notifies them of what we have on the books for ordinances, and so, um, through that method, we try to get the word out about what we have on the books and how people can, um, remedy their situation, and also provides the opportunity, if they want to provide additional information for us to follow up, um, through the court system, they can do that as well.
Thank you.
Do you think that that could be something maybe at the next meeting under presentations that you could let everybody know so they can see it in print and those that are watching TV, watching, um, TV Hamilton? Again, maybe if we get it out there more often, then people, it'll sink in with them?
Absolutely, I can make a report.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I have a point I'd like to bring up, it's been a number of years since we have had a charter review commission,
and there are some things in our charter, uh, that probably could be looked at again. Carla, I know that you'd kind of taken that under your wing on, at various times through my service on council, but I thi- I think there are some opportunities for us to streamline again, uh, and I'm not sure the, the sequence that we go through on that, Pat, uh, or Carla, and.
Sure.
Yep.
I think it says every five years.
Five years is what.
But that doesn't mean that you can't do it more often.
Correct, and I'd have to go back and look and see exactly when the last one was, but it seems to me that we're coming around to that time again. I looked in our current charter, it's all the five year stipulation.
Well, a lot of times it has to do with if there's any changes that maybe administration sees that we need to make, so, maybe we can put something at that request out or inquiry out to administration to see if there's anything that we do need to review.
I believe it's 2020, that's right.
Madam Law Director, are we required to do that every five years? Is it required by charter, isn't it?
It is a requirement, we're trying to do that every five years, but it doesn't mean that we cannot do it sooner than that.
Right.
And Eric, Eric just said he thought it was in 2020.
I'm pretty sure.
Our first year.
Yeah, our first year, and I remember, uh, the charter review board.
That's correct, because we had to do it the.
Okay, there you go, but thanks for hanging on, and I remember, so.
See how well we're getting along already doing this?
So, our next year is charter review.
Yeah, it would be twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Um, I'll have to go check that detail.
Well.
I can give you the exact date.
Why don't you give us an exact date so we can make sure that it's on our timeline, and then we'll, we'll make sure we follow that charter.
So is it okay, Letitia, for like, on the ordinance about, uh, when I had Daniel bring that up,